Beautiful, isn't it? Now, "The Pleasure of Ethics" by Vladimir Carrasco, 11th grade student at Alexander Hamilton Preparatory Academy.
As a member of the Elizabeth Public Schools Professional Learning Community, I wish to treat, as I wish to be treated. To do that, I pledge to understand that the school community is a special place. Listen respectfully when someone else is speaking by paying close attention and not interrupting, speaking at calm voice or using broken language. Dress appropriately for teaching and learning by taking the opportunity. Dress appropriately for teaching and learning, inspiring the best in myself and others by celebrating successes and learning from mistakes. Care about others by demonstrating acts of kindness. Be a lifelong learner by taking every opportunity to learn from others.
Thank you very much.
Call it off, hold. Oh, hey! Call it. Call it off, this. Miss.
Now, the public stadium, would you please sit down?
We believe all students can learn and achieve their high levels.
In Elizabeth Public Schools, we're going to mean accurately create and implement challenging standards that define the level of cognitive complexity of expected learning. Such standards are applied at all levels in the district, including classroom activities, instructional plans, course content, student work, assessments both summative and formative. We will ensure that all students graduate with a characteristic skill and ability. It is research and achievement that the achievement gap is evident. Elizabeth Public Schools students will strengthen the nation's economic, intellectual, and social impact on the world. In order to do this, we will ensure that every student, regardless of their socioeconomic background, is inspired to participate fully in the educational experience and cultivate a true passion for learning. We believe that teachers can also contribute to student achievement. Elizabeth Public Schools teachers make a positive difference visible not only through higher touch points, reservation rates, and attendance, but by championing the love of learning at every other school.
We will prove that development can take itself with real testing.
A world-class educator has high expectations for himself and his students. His will be challenged and be challenged, and possess learning opportunities for continuous growth. Such educators have potential in every child, no exception. They teach with passion and make an effort to ensure that every student reaches their full potential. We believe that effective leaders produce excellent results. Effective leaders and conduits for student success inspire Elizabeth students to think, to learn, to achieve, and to fail. Effective leaders and passionate others earn the trust and loyalty of those they love. It is very credible proof with your own that we made this battle and motivate others to achieve excellence.
You will be taught, devoted, taken, and more devoted than leaders.
The goal is to achieve excellence, and effective leaders do not tolerate anything less than excellence. Our leaders will demonstrate an honorary role to contribute to and enable those around them to increase their achievement. We believe that high quality and consistent dedication of new generations. Elizabeth Public Schools is dependent on its internal and external networks, working in collaboration to ensure its high leadership. The internal team members include the teachers, staff, and community members that directly affect the student's achievement. The external team includes the community at large, partnerships with nonprofits, organizations, and universities, faith-based communities, and state and national organizations. The end result is a sustainable system that supports networks of people committed to excellence through education. Our students will leave Elizabeth Public Schools with a passion for learning that will lead them through a lifetime of fulfillment.
Ready for our presentations? We have very special here tonight for all of you. So we're going to have all the performances, and later on, we have some presentations and a resolution. So please, owe your attention. This is very special. I would like to introduce Tango Dance Turned Off Music by Nater Leder, performed by Michelle Ramos Reyes, Melvin Dice, Leah Kells, Giovanni Morales, 12th grade students of Alexander Hamilton Preparatory Academy. A group of Alexander Hamilton Academy choreographed by Michelle Ramos Reyes and Melody Lenta, the 12th graders students of Hamilton Preparatory Academy.
Many people know Tango from shows such as Dancing with the Stars, so you think you can dance. But Tango begins a century ago in places that look nothing like the elegant settings that we see today. The Tango comes from Argentina and Uruguay. It sprung up in cafes and bars in poor neighborhoods. In style, it reflects the mix of cultures coming together and rapidly expanding cities, in particular Buenos Aires. Among the influences of the tradition are the traditional Pocahontas, Wolffs, Marmontos from Poland and Austria. Rhythms from Africa, Spanish pomenco, the Avanera from Cuba, and the Milan Glasser, a song and dance of the Argentine casket. The original Tango looked nothing like polished gold dancing music today. The rough moves reflect the hard-working, working-class men and women who created the art of Tango. Upper-class Argentinean families objected to Tango and prevented children from performing it. This made this dance more popular. Young people started dancing to Tango in nightclubs where the moves became less rigid and more elegant. When these young Argentinians traveled to Europe in the early years of the 20th century, they put Tango with them, and rapidly became, and rapidly became the most popular dance in Wisconsin. And only, it was only after the Tango achieved acclaim in Europe that the Argentinian upper class finally embraced their native dance form. The fortunes of the Tango have been clearly tied to the political and economic ties in Argentina. During the Great Depression in 1929, the Tango went into a deep decline. It became popular once again during the administration of President Juan Hironi, who greatly supported the Tango dancing music as a cultural treasure. When Peron fell in 1955, the Tango was banned by the ruling dictatorship. The dance enjoyed another revival in popularity in the 1960s, when the Nuevo Tango, or New Tangos, brought new rhythms and harmonies to the old Tango music. Today, Tango remains Argentina's most popular music and the country's largest cultural export. The Tango is believed to have made its first appearance in the U.S. in New York in 1913. There are many different types of Tango. There is classical Argentinean style, a football room which is the one that people see on competitions, international, and even Finnish Tango. The biggest difference between these styles is the holding, how the partners embrace one another in the dance. My name is Michelle Memus Reyes, and I choreographed this dance among all the other dancers, and this is my version of contemporary Tango which I adopted from the stage.
Beautiful. Thank you very much. Now, we have "Tango Señorero" by Gensy Jean-Perry, "Song for the Awesome Hero" by Joseph H. Morning, performed by Terrancey Valley musical notes Middle School Choir, directed by Marleneis Louvings. Well, in order to have you here today, it's Louvings.
Candles in the windows, shining clear and bright. Candles in the windows, like a frosty night.
Thank you, Mr. Proudie. It is currently being joined by Claire. Let's have another round of applause for the attendees. And now, we're going to continue with our agenda. We have a few presentations to give to some of our students and special guests. So I ask my team members to join us. Darlene, please. And now, we're going to continue with our presentations. Today, we have a special resolution that will be presented by our board member, Francisco Gonzalez.
Good evening, everyone. The Elizabeth Ford Education welcomes a family of Dr. John D. Basherek to receive a resolution in his honor for his notable contributions to the Elizabeth Ford Schools and the great Elizabeth community. So, this white man, mother and Michelle also is part of the to read the resolution aloud. It says, "For education resolution were passed, the community at large mourned the sudden loss of Dr. John D. Basherek, Executive Director of the School of General Studies at King University. And whereas, Dr. Basherek was a leader in King University's effort continuously to improve the quality of the education and the experiences the university provides students faculty and employees, where he began his work at King in 1993 as an academic and joined the whole college faculty in September 2001, rising to the level of Executive Director of the School of General Studies in September 2010. And whereas, as the Director of the School of General Studies, Dr. Basherek provided workshops to help faculty realize the roles in the assessment of general education and develop common rubrics for collecting institutional data about student learning. And whereas, Dr. Basherek was serving his second term on the faculty senate where he first was selected in 2009. Also was serving on the university's planning council to which he was appointed in 2011. And whereas, Dr. Basherek earned the Presidential Excellence Award for service in 2008. And whereas, Dr. Basherek was initiated into the National Honor Society of Thai Cup High in May 2009 and has been serving as its president since 2011. And whereas, Dr. Basherek helped promote post-secondary education, civic involvement, and environmental awareness throughout his efforts in the Elizabeth community. Now there he resolves that the Elizabeth Ford Education recognizes the life and commitment to excellence of Dr. Basherek for his impassioned work in academia and for the overall betterment of society. We further resolve that this resolution be spread on the official agenda of the Elizabeth Education. I do so through this resolution.
Agreed.
And I would like to present this to this white man. That was John, dear friend of the Elizabeth public community, a pattern, you know, role model to Laura's students at the high school, all these efforts and environmental efforts making them aware, we miss him dearly, as I'm sure in your family. This is just a small token of appreciation from the board, from the Elizabeth community to recognize what he did for our children. Also may God have him in heaven and may he be blessed. Thank you.
All in favor, say it.
Aye.
All in favor, say it. Donate it. Resolution text. And now, we have very nice presentations. I have the honor of having the Excellence even athletics. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to honor one of our students from Hamilton Preparatory Academy. We are proud to say that this is the senior at Hamilton Press, is now a local captain and starter for the Elizabeth Men and Men Football Team, but he also carries a 4.26 average in a very demanding academic program which includes many honors and native courses. We are very happy to announce that Fabrice Rui was named NUS 12 New Jersey First Scholar Athlete for the whole season. We would like to present Fabrice with a certificate. Please join us up front, Mr. Kalil Isonebi. Tomorrow, I'll be having the homecoming meeting at the Williams Field. So we expect a lot of people to show up. He promised to score for me tomorrow, so you know, I take off you that. Now this, I will have Mr. Trujillo present the next.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
I have the honor to introduce the Excellence in Arts. And please forgive me if I, or correct me if I mispronounce anyone's name. Okay, that's, I don't want to offend anyone. And now, we have some of the awards we would like to present for Excellence in Arts. At Terrance C. Riley School Number Seven, we have some teachers who go above and beyond in their dedication to providing an excellent education in the arts, including fine arts, instrumental and vocal music, dance and performing arts. We would like to recognize these teachers for their outstanding contribution to the arts. Please come forward as I call your name. Steen Almeida. Juanmi Cristo. Marcelo Loser. Tiffany Steed. Roger Romales. Michelle Green. Madruga Enriquez. Brent Jones. Kamajee Watson. Brendan Gold. Marlenis Robbins. Howie Williams. If you haven't been to School Seven, School Seven is a special place. One of our shining stars in the district. We are so proud to be able to have that type of excellence throughout the district. We hope to have that across the district someday. They are really a role model, it's a special place. If you haven't had an opportunity to visit School Seven, please do. It's a great place because these people walk so hard on the direction of, where is she? I saw her here earlier. Mr. Zidanea? Yes, you move fast, you're over there before. All right. Thank you so much for all your support. You're very appreciative.
Thank you, Kevin Long. There's time. We have more time to come. Now, we have the Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy, and I will ask Mr. Campbell to please do the presentation.
We would also like to recognize several teachers from Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy for their dedication to arts, education, and their commitment to inspiring all students to achieve academic and creative excellence. So as I call your name, please come up. Edward de Alessandro. Jennifer Luciano. Deabel Velardo. Yasmin Mark. Kelly Anne McLeaney. Dennis Extoni. Carmen Beljona. Carrie Messinao. Evelyn Molinaris. Anna Piñera. Mary Rising. Mary Rivera. Michelle Rodriguez. Seagan Savitt. Ellen Schroitz. Sandra Toll. Gail Valenti. And Irene Walsh. And thank you all of our students, all of our teachers who are helping our students achieve.
And now, we have the Stars of Excellence. Mr. Nels, how can I pick up your language?
Good evening, everyone. Excuse me. This month, we have several Stars of Excellence from Alexander Hamilton Preparatory Academy who we'd like to honor for their extremely work in providing excellent educational experiences and services to our students. Please come forward as I call your name. John Byrd. Elena Hanselum. Daniel Connor. Lauren Sarnicki. Sonia Diego Salero. Harry Calada. Michael Lutzer. Wendy Maravi. Brendan Bede. And Tina Pereira. Congratulations to you all.
And now, we have a very special presentation by Mr. Migros. Could you please come back here? I didn't tell you to go back to your seat. Here's.
Special presentation, the NGA MODEL Arts Award presented by Kristen Wagner, Director of New Jersey Arts Education Partnership Program. At this time, I would like to introduce Kristen Wagner, Director of the New Jersey Arts Education Partnership Program, who will be presenting two of our students with the 2013 Model Schools in the Arts Award. Model Schools are selected for scoring in the top 10% of the New Jersey Arts Education Census Project while teaching all four arts disciplines, dance, music, theater, and the visual arts.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much for inviting me here for this very special meeting. Just a little background about this project. The New Jersey Arts Education Partnership created the Model School in the Arts Project in direct response to several of the recommendations made in the summary of the Arts Education Census Report. The goals of the Model Schools Project are to analyze the elements of model arts education programs, to determine the attributes shared by model schools, and to provide mentoring to schools looking to improve their arts education programs. We identified those schools, as was just said, that scored in the top 10% of the survey, and those schools that were teaching all four arts disciplines. This year, 46 schools were invited to apply, nine schools applied, and five were selected for a site visit. I'm happy to say that two schools from Elizabeth were invited to apply. The team that visited Terrance C. Riley School Number Seven and Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy praised the rigorous arts education program, an extremely supportive administration led by Jennifer, Zidanea, and Michael O'Hara, a strong district model, a strong team of art educators who obviously love what they do and feel that they have a sense of empowerment. In addition, the teachers consider themselves mentors. They have a great scheduling model. They understand that collaboration and professional development are valued. There is strong parental support for the arts, and a community that champions the arts. And finally, a student body that feels valued, encouraged, and made to feel like artists. And as a result, they are passionate, loyal, and extremely strong ambassadors for Terrance C. Riley School Number Seven and Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy. It's therefore my honor to present this certificate which reads... On behalf of the New Jersey State Council on the Arts, the New Jersey Department of Education, the Geraldine R. Dodge Foundation, Art Pride New Jersey, and Quonder Arts Education Research, the New Jersey Arts Education Partnership recognizes Terrance C. Riley School Number Seven and the Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy for exceptional excellence in arts education and hereby awards this designation as a Model School in the Arts for the state of New Jersey.
Thank you very much. I have a special gift for you. And now, back with your presentations, I also would like to acknowledge a former board president and board member, Mr. Juan Hardo.
Alexander Hamilton is preparing me for college. For notes, helping organize my work, and reinforce what I've learned and taught.
Alexander Hamilton is preparing me for college. My advocates and school counselors are helping me apply to colleges and rate school appropriate college essays.
Alexander Hamilton is preparing me for college. None of you might even go to college. My advocates teach me about the fastest, the free application prefer student aid.
Alexander Hamilton is preparing me for college and for my academic. I've been introduced to a number of different rare opportunities.
Alexander Hamilton Preparatory Academy is dream big.
Because of the education I have received at Alexander Hamilton, I could be a retired by all classes.
Better known. Lawyer.
Private investigator. Thank you.
Letters.
A friend of mine's daughter. FBI agent.
Psycho.
Statistic.
General.
Elizabeth's brother.
Doctor.
Fastest surgeon.
Doctor.
Physical therapist.
Teacher.
Johnson.
Fastest surgeon.
Physical therapist.
Teacher.
Alexandra Hamilton, today's president of Mark Theater.
Alexandra Hamilton Laboratory Academy, an athlete, perfect together.
Citizens, may I address the board? At this time, the microphones are open for public coming to those who have signed right to this session. I shall call individuals to the microphone based on order of signing in. Each senior maybe a participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. The total time of public coming shall be limited to sixty minutes. No individual is able to view any, their time for another individual. All seniors shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person, participant, may address or question board members individually. The following rules for public participation shall apply. Timelimits will be strictly enforced. No personal attacks on individuals. No vulgar or indecent language. A person may address the board no more than one during a single meeting. Speakers should refrain from naming individuals. Final questions posed during public participation will not be debated. As a reminder, this is a meeting of the board in public, not a meeting of the public. Uh, we have one person, Ms. Roscaredo. Would you like to address the board?
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I have invited from Elizabeth Education Association members to attend this court meeting with me. The EEA advocates for all its members. The association is not just Roscaredo. We are three thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven strong. We are, there are two thousand three hundred and fifteen professional staff, and I'm very happy to say that we have one thousand five hundred and forty-two educational support personnel. I encourage... I encourage EEA members to become involved, to participate in association activities, such as attending board meetings of education, like the one tonight. So I would like to ask, one of the groups I invited this evening was the food service cafeteria workers and food service workers. Would you please stand? Now we have all the EEA members that are here tonight, to please stand. All of them. We have many hurdles to overcome to protect the rights and working conditions of all our members. Tonight, however, we have joined together to celebrate our new beginning. As an association, we are here to acknowledge Aga Yubemeyer as the new superintendent of schools. I, as president of the EEA, along with my three thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven members, wish the superintendent much success in her new position. As an association, we have worked well with Mrs. Yubemeyer in the past, and we hope to continue to do so in the future, and I know that we will. So at this point, I would ask Stefania, and wanted to come forward. We have some flowers, I don't know how you're going to get them, but maybe Stefania can come down. Okay. Okay, so Stefania is going to present Mrs. Yubemeyer, which is a chocolate. Yeah, which actually is your mother to you. And Aga, for those hard days and afternoons, I brought you a nice box of chocolates. You never know what you're gonna get.
I would like to thank you for this honor. We have worked together for many, many years. I truly believe in the importance of professional learning communities. I believe that the reason for which we are so successful today is because of the outstanding team members that we have in our organization. And that begins with our assistants, with our food service workers, with our custodians, with our secretaries, with our teachers, with our administrators. Without our team members, we would not be where we are today. Without important relationships, such as the relationships we have with the EEA, with the Principal and Supervisors Association, without the support of our board, we would not be where we are today. So I am truly grateful for this opportunity. I consider this a privilege to be here in this position, and I thank you and look forward to many years of working with you.
But now, I can never say no to a EEA member. So I've been sitting all evening next to this lovely food service worker from the school who's very proud of our school, and she wanted me to acknowledge the vice principal, Valerie, for all the lovely decorations that she's done tonight. Is that right? So I have to do. Thank you very much.
At this time, I close the public coming portion of this meeting. Mr. Kennedy, can you please take a souvenir again?
Thank you. Approve the minutes of the meeting of September nineteenth. Approve the minutes, second.
Moved by Mr. Tuvilo, second by Mr. Patno. Any questions upcoming? No? Please, roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Pathless. Kalela. Yes. Gonzalez. Yes. Nazca. Yes. Padla. Yes. Trhia. Yes. Castia.
Yes.
Approve all the secretary's reports for the month of August. Approve the minutes. School report, I follow you. Second.
Moved by Mr. Tuvilo, second by Mr. Gonzalez. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Pathless.
Yes.
Kalela. Yes. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla. Yes. Trhia.
Yes.
Castia.
Yes.
Two A Personnel Report. Move the report, second.
Moved by Mr. Tuvilo, second by Mr. Patno. Any questions coming? Say no. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Pathless.
Yes.
Kalela.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazca. Stay. Padla.
Yes.
Trhia. Yes. Uh, Mr. Kennedy, yes, with an extension on page seventeen. Castia.
Yes.
Three Tuition Report. Move the report. Second.
Moved by Mr. Tuvilo, second by Mr. Patno. Any questions, comments? No, Mr. Kennedy.
Pathless.
Yes.
Kalela.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Trhia.
Yes.
Castia.
Yes.
Three A Supplemental Tuition Report. Move the report.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Tuvilo, second by Mr. Patno. Any questions coming? Mr. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Pathless.
Yes.
Kalela.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Trhia.
Yes.
Castia.
Yes.
Four A Considerations. Move the report.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Tuvilo, second by Mr. Patno. Questions coming? No? Mr. Kennedy, roll call.
Pathless.
Yes.
Kalela.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Trhia.
Yes.
Castia.
Yes.
Four B Use of Facilities. Mr. uh, Madam President, Madam Vice President, like to move. Item one through six waiver roll fees. Second.
Moved by Mr. Nazca, second by Mr. Tuvilo. Any questions coming?
I'd like to comment on uh, on the waiver roll fees. In particular, um, item one, two, and three, these are requests by city councilmen for the use of our facilities. As you were aware, over the last two months, I've been asking city hall, please permit us to host a town hall meeting in town hall, uh, so we could have a public discussion, uh, with uh, with the members of the committee. Uh, in particular, with, with, with an emphasis on the tax situation in the city. I've been to several board, uh, committee meetings, and I've asked for them to please work with me, and I, I saw one response, Mr. Kennedy, I don't know if it was a second. I believe the response to that was that it wasn't available. I can't imagine what they're doing at town hall, other than having a meeting every, uh, few days, uh, with the alcohol, uh, license commission meets, or a regular scheduled committee meeting. Um, I don't, I don't think the room gets a lot of, of use. I just really think they don't want to meet with us. Uh, I'm going to support these today in good faith and allow them to, uh, to use our facilities, because I believe they do belong to the public, and we should help, uh, city council. But I'm going to ask publicly that our friends over at city council, and perhaps Miss Pathless can join me in this effort, since, uh, at the last meeting, we spoke so highly of her, and she has so many friends there, that I hope that she, uh, could help me build this bridge and get this meeting done. Uh, the committee, the, uh, committee president and I was concerned with the amount of people, uh, that would attend this meeting. I don't know if he was just referring to the room size. I just hope that we can agree to have the meeting, the meeting needs to take place, should take place. The residents should have the opportunity to express their concerns and be educated about what the tax levy is in Elizabeth, how it actually works. Unfortunately, there's been a lot of misinformation, um, politically driven, and it's really caused a lot of confusion, uh, to, to the residents in the city. So I, I just can't imagine why they don't want to have a meeting. We're willing to, to, to outreach to them, and we can do it. I mean, it can really be done. If the facility is the problem, like I mentioned to the, uh, to the councilman and president, I said, um, let's just agree to have a meeting first, then we can find another venue if you think that many people are gonna show up. But I, I've gone to several of these meetings, and they, uh, they're not well attended, quite frankly. There're not a lot of people there. Uh, perhaps something of this, um, of this sort would bring some attention to the problem. Some interest, I'm sure. I know a lot of taxpayers that would like to go and really see the presentation. Uh, unfortunately, they're, they've, they just keep blowing us off. I'm quite offended, because I am a taxpayer in the city apart from being a member of this board and elected official for nearly seven years now. I think we have the right to use town hall, and quite frankly, if it's available, I don't see why they deny us the, the access. We, we, they have no problem asking to use our buildings for their functions. Um, so why not let us use town hall? So I, I ask that you all, uh, vote in the affirmative for this. I'm gonna do it in good faith, but I ask that you please, um, support me in trying to get this meeting done. And perhaps even attend one of these, uh, council meetings with me and voice your concerns and, and support for my cause. Thank you, Mr.
Um, is that a comment?
Yeah. Two comments. One, um, to Mr. Tuvilo during your comment, um, you've never reached out to me in regards to partnering and working on this, uh, situation or your concerns. So I definitely, you and I can definitely sit down together and see how we can make it work, since you've requested that I help you, so we can do that. Um, second, um, I know that in the, I think, I believe it's the August or the September meeting, we had discussed that if any council member requested, um, to use our facility, they had to go to, on a month-to-month basis. In the first request, um, that councilperson is asking for October, November, and December, I asked that we just approve October and November, and they have to request it again at the next meeting for us to approve the December meeting. That's what we discussed, um, at the last meeting or the meeting prior to that.
Madam President, fine. Um, I, I appreciate your, your offer. I'm gonna take you up on that. Um, I'm inviting you here today. Please, yes, help me with that. I try to can, and I do remember, uh, that being done, but I think that was the case, um, last month. Um, we had issue. I don't know if there's a policy, or if it was more of a, and perhaps the attorney could clarify that for us. I think that was just that meeting, where we, uh, we came back and we, uh, changed, uh, the resolution to have the, uh, the city council and use the facilities. The request would be month-to-month rather than... But as, as, as is written here, as is presented on the, on the agenda today, I don't have a problem supporting it the way it is. I, I, like I said, I, I made a point at the last time. I had, I have an issue, they refused to let us use their facility, and they continue to, to argue the fact of misappropriating, uh, taxes. But meanwhile, it's okay for us to spend money to open the doors for them. So in particular, Mr. Gonzalez in, in the second ward, he had issue, but I had promised him in good faith, I would continue to try to, uh, to work towards a resolution. So I have no problem in, in, in supporting this the way it is right here.
Madam Vice President, I just want to say, um, to be fair to all the councilpeople, we should do it the same way. If you wanted to just choose to do it on a month-to-month basis, we can. And we're gonna do it on a month-to-month basis, and that's what we need to do every month. We can't keep flip-flopping it back and forth and allow the certain councilmembers and not for everything else. So if we want, if we're gonna decide to do it on a month-to-month basis, then that's fine. We're gonna do it on a year-based, then that's fine as well. So I think that we need to decide what we're gonna do. If it's only a month-to-month basis, we're going to be on the side of it between the entire year.
Madam President.
Say no.
Madam President, number, number one, that's under discussion here. My office has been requesting from councilpeople on a month-to-month basis. This is a specific association, which has, Frank Maslow Civic Association, but it's an independent body. So that's why when they requested, we didn't treat it as following a request from councilpeople on a month-to-month basis.
So Mr. Kennedy, just to appoint clarification, what you're saying is that all, it bears that the, the, the name of the honorable Frank Maslow, who is the councilman of the sixth ward, is actually a civic association, it bears his name, and it's not a request from the city councilman, as it is for Councilman Sedanio in the fourth and Mr. Gonzalez. So we are following, uh, what we set out to do last month.
That's correct. The letter was not, um, addressed to my office by the councilman, it was directed by my office, by the leader of the civic association.
Okay, so then I, I think we're, I think that's exactly what you were looking for.
Okay, so it's for the, this civic association, not for the community, like you just said before.
I'm sorry, I wouldn't, we, ask him to your question.
No, Mr. Soffman, that's fine. Thank you. Okay. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Pathless.
Yes to two, three, four, and five, and no to one.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Yes to two, three, four, and five, and no to one.
How about number six?
Excuse me?
Number six.
Oh, yes, six, excuse me.
Halela. Yes. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla. Yes. Trhia. Yes, Mr. Kennedy. Castilla.
Yes.
For BB, use of facilities with fees. Move the report as recommended. Second.
Move by Mr. Nazca, second by Mr. Trillo, any comments or questions? Say no, roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Pathless.
Yes.
Halela. Yes. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla. Yes. Trhia. Yes. Castilla.
Yes.
For C, field trips. Approve the trips. Second.
Move by Mr. Trillo, second by Mr. Bravo, any questions or comments? Say no, roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Pathless.
Yes.
Halela. Yes. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla. Yes. Trhia. Yes. Castilla.
Yes.
Superintendent here.
To Ellen. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to begin by announcing our gifted and talented program at William Howard School Number 22 will have another opportunity to grow in size as well as quality when it's provided the opportunity to locate at a new facility that the New Jersey School Development Authority will provide to taxpayers of Elizabeth. The new school will have elementary grades two to eight. The target opening for this school is 2016. It is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Luis Golda, our Director of Planning and Property, who will present to us the new school number 22.
Good evening. It is a pleasure for me to be before the board to provide a quick update of the progress of the project that finally will end up providing the list of more available another schools we can have on school number 22. There has been a committee, a working committee formed by members of the district, members of the School Development Authority, and the Department of Education that have been meeting the last few months to develop the program and eventually finalize the design of the new school. The new school will be a elementary school for grades two to eight. Six classes of each grade is quite larger than the other elementary schools that we have been building. This one will be like maybe fifteen to twenty percent larger than the others. The capacity is upgraded to eighty to a thousand schools and is proposed to be built adjacent to the Opera Academy. The target opening is September 2016. This school will be a different school in a sense that based on the program that is very heavily focused on academics and the arts and have a very demanding curriculum. Will have a gymnasium, cafeteria, an IT media center, and multi-purpose room. This will be the school for used to have a cafeteria. This will have special space just for performances, which serves as an auditorium without chairs and but is flexible to do all the things in there. Also will have a partition on the stage which will allow the school to have two things happening at the same time on the space. So that's very convenient and will allow to actually fit the program into the school. Because of the heavy concentration on the academics, it has, it will provide six science rooms. So the art rooms, board music rooms, and full-fledged dance studio with all the equipment. And we'll have all the other support spaces and community spaces. This school, you can see the massing. This is not actually the design of this school, but just a massing to try to represent more or less like the school is going to be, it's going to look at the future. We have worked out some tentative floor plans. We show that all the assembly spaces, the community spaces are the on the first floor. And you can see that the building sticks out all one area. It's all one story high. And then the back of the school facing the river will be the academic tower that will contain all the classrooms. It will have a driveway across the property which will allow the buses to go around, circle, and be able to unload without really interfering with the buses of the old school, the Opera Academy. So they will be able to stage in Twister Street and be able to come around and download in front of the school. Will allow enough space for some playground and parking in between the two schools. And basically, that's what we are right now. We are, the next stage is that we're going to work on the system. So we'll be deciding what materials it was going to be, what air-conditioned equipment is going to have, security systems, and fire art system, et cetera, et cetera. So that's the next stage. So we're not there yet, but definitely the team from the district will make sure that we have stable yard equipment in all of those systems, as usually is done. So right now, we have any questions? So all of my presentation.
If I may, Mr. Quo, thank you. What would be the cost of this building?
We don't know yet, but if we follow previous experiences, we're talking probably about twenty-eight to thirty million dollars.
Thirty million dollars. How much of that money would be paid by this, by the levy in the city of Elizabeth?
Is currently state-related funds. So it would be no money coming from the.
So we will get another school, we'll be able to house a thousand students, and it will cost zero to the local taxpayer.
Correct, because that school will do all the equipment, will do all the furniture, will do the televisions, will do everything that we need to function.
And this is to be done on land we already own?
Exactly.
And the most important thing, apart from the academics and all the great things that the school be able to afford our students, is the fact that we will create jobs. As you rely on a school that size, I can imagine right off the bat, the principal and vice principal, but how many teaching jobs and support staff will you estimate that will create?
It certainly would require well over ninety positions, if not the range of ninety to one hundred and twenty positions.
So, I don't know if the AEA president is here, but that might get her closer to four thousand members. So we're very happy, good-paying jobs for the local residents and a great opportunity with zero costs to the taxpayers. It's a win-win and it's a testament to all the hard work you've been doing. You're, you're, you've been so far ahead of your team. And my experience here, when we opened all these schools. You learned the system, you got on top of it. I know this has been planned for a while. There have been studies done, there was architecture work done before. With the new administration, things have changed. You've worked really well with the new administration. I mean, the fact that we have school twenty-one open now, school eight, not to mention all the other, the expansion of the early childhood. We've been able to do a lot of things. And it's because of the hard work and commitment to know how you and your team have done it. And we appreciate it. I appreciate it. I really do as a taxpayer, as a father, as a member of this board. I know it's not easy, but when we can compare it to other districts throughout the state, we are leaps and bounds from heaven because of the work you're doing. And you're doing an excellent job and we really congratulate you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Have a good day.
Mr. Quo. I have a question, please. Two thousand sixteen.
That's the target.
What about the academic high school, the Sycorale?
Sycorale, the Crystal Building, they are thinking that it will take about twenty-four to thirty months to build.
So possibly maybe the same time. So that gives us, my own superintendent, an incredible opportunity. Because if we have the new academic high schools, that three up upper, and then that could be used for a number of purposes, to alleviate the old pounding within many of our schools. So this really is a significant event for us here in Elizabeth. The people should be very, very proud, especially as Mr. Trillo said, and no cost to taxpayer. Congratulations to the city of Elizabeth. I want to congratulate my colleagues and Mr. Quo for a job well done.
Thank you, thank you.
Over two thousand six.
Mr. Quo, this is new school number, we have had seventeen new schools in the past thirteen years. Is that correct?
Just about.
So again, that's a significant, you know, an average of a school per year if we look at it that way.
The district has been busy.
Yes.
The same business.
Yeah, it has been fantastic accomplishment by, you know, the district, by you leading, you know, facilities, so that is great.
Keep in mind that it's not only my team, but there is an instructional team that works with us to be able to put the last touch with program and everything else. So it's a big team that works with us. Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy, can you continue to take Mr. Trillo to the next?
Superintendent.
I have the report to the board on the public hearing on harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Two times each year between September first and January first, and between January first and June thirtieth, the school board shall hold a public hearing at which the chief school administrator will report to the Board of Education all acts of violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation, or bullying which occurred during the previous reporting period. The report shall include the number of HIV reports in the schools, the status of all investigations, the nature of the HIV and other data required by law. I'd like to welcome you to the public hearing on harassment, intimidation, and bullying for the period starting January first, 2013, and ending June thirtieth, 2013. In January 2011, the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights was signed into law as Public Law 2010, Chapter 122. In accordance with this law, all New Jersey public school districts must designate the full week of October of each year as a week of respect. During the week of respect, school districts are expected to organize activities, including but not limited to age-appropriate instruction and opportunities for student discussion on conflict resolution, issues of diversity, and tolerance. A resolution was put before the board in October declaring the week of October first through the fifth, week of respect. Each of our schools plans appropriate activities for this week. In fulfilling the reporting requirements pursuant to NJSA 18A, Section seventeen through forty-six, two times each year between September first and January first, and between January first and June thirtieth, the school board shall hold a public hearing at which the chief school administrator will report to the Board of Education, public ethics, of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. There were a total of three hundred and seventy HIV investigations completed by appropriate school staff. Of those cases investigated, a hundred and one were confirmed cases of HIV and were affirmed by board members through the August 2013 meeting. The following anti-bullying specialists, anti-bullying specialist alternates, and anti-bullying coordinator conducted these investigations. Maria Cabeda, Jacqueline Pajustic, Angie Paco, Maria Brito, Jessica Sfranco, Ali Malik, Carrie O'Connor, Maria Vindas, Peter Bosler, Lorde Soto, Linda Fletcher, Colleen Remus, Christine Flaherty, Jen Mazarella, Sarah LaFace, Kenyatta Jackson, Giselle Sansone, Jeanette Sanchez, Denise Unaki, Sophia Verma, Teresa Givada, Wilma Helm, Jennifer Fernandez, Natalie Bacon, Anita McCray, Rosaria Scaff, Dana Gil Marais, Darnella Bowles, Andrea Juca, Eva Exelberg, Lauren Zanarki, Victoria Lawrence White, Lisa O'Leary, Justinia Soler-Sun, David Destra, Stacy Max, Cindy Lichtenstein, Amelia Joanne Turner, Kimberly Jerk-Gerges, Wendy Baravi, Rosa Dosadis, and Eunice Vaslo. There were nine incidents based on race, two incidents based on color, one incident based on religion, zero incidents based on ancestry, six incidents based on national origin, eleven incidents based on gender, twelve incidents based on sexual orientation, two incidents based on gender identity or expression, seven incidents based on mental, physical, or sensory disability, and seventy-six incidents based on other targeted bases. Ten incidents involved a gesture, six incidents involved a written communication, eighty-one incidents were verbal, forty incidents were physical, and eight incidents involved an electronic communication. There were forty-five at-school suspensions, eighteen in-school suspensions, and fourteen other disciplinary actions. Additional services such as in-house counseling, skill development, and behavioral intervention were offered to involved students. Between January first, 2013, and June thirtieth, 2013, the district provided appropriate HIV training to guidance counselors and social workers and to new staff in the district. Additionally, the district provided extensive and specified training to the anti-bullying coordinator and to all anti-bullying specialists and their alternates. All school-level administrators and all HIV staff received training in the hipster recording program which is being implemented this year. Is there anyone who would like to comment on tonight's report?
Thank you, this will be. That's one of the areas that most districts are working very hard because not only affects students, but staff, and even parents. And we're taking every measure to comply to the law. Thank you very much.
Mr. Kennedy. I would like to conclude with the superintendent's report. I have shared a copy with all of the board members this evening, a report which is entitled Inside EPS. If I may, I'd like to share with you that it is a great honor to accept the responsibility of this key leadership role for Elizabeth Public Schools. When I started as a teacher for our district, never did I imagine that I would one day have the opportunity to lead such a dedicated group of individuals committed to excellence in the classroom. Our effort to prepare every child for post-secondary education is something that I take to heart and believe that our best days and commitments to that cause are upon us. This is the first issue of Inside EPS, a publication that we have created to provide. a publication that we have created to provide you, the team, and community member an update on the work that our district is doing in an effort to promote equity and excellence for the Elizabeth Public Schools. I hope that you enjoy the material that we have provided. Feel free to send any recommendations of some of the stories that you would like to include to Inside EPS to keterexcellence@elizabeth.pghol.com and jws. Let me take this opportunity to thank you for your efforts in making the Elizabeth Public Schools a place that all of us teachers support and the community can be proud of. In tonight's Inside EPS, we are featuring Extended Data EPS which receives recognition. A report titled "Interesitating the Finances of Extended Learning Time" will be released. Within the next couple of weeks, Elizabeth Public Schools will be one of the featured districts. The National Center on Time and Learning is dedicated to expanding learning time to improve student achievement and enable well-rounded education. Through research, public policy, and technical assistance, the National Center on Time and Learning supports national, state, and local initiatives that add significantly more time to help children meet the demands of the 21st century and prepare for success in college and career. This report, which has been completed by the National Center of Time and Learning, where five schools have been identified for this study, Elizabeth Public Schools is honored to announce that the school that is featured in the report with glowing appraisal of its operations and results is Dr. Orlando Dreda, School Number 26. Our district was identified for this study by the National Center of Time and Learning and was identified by one of the representatives as being one of the few districts nationally that is able to boast and highlight extended learning on a scale as the way it is implemented here in Elizabeth. As we know, Elizabeth is one of only a very small number of districts committed to a longer day for all of its schools, including its six high schools. The district first transitioned to an eight-hour day in 2006 when the board approved magnet schools to open with extended day, just like School Number 26. The high school required an eight hours with students, and since then, the high school has broken into six separate academies with a longer day remains. More schools converted to extended day in 2009, 2010, when the district leadership provided the six lowest-performing schools with an additional 90 minutes per day. This additional time was to be directed primarily toward a period of the day that was reserved for additional interventions in English Language Arts and Math. This has helped in environments such as the School 26 community, which is cited for its collaborative planning. Teachers at School 26 are clear in their desire to collaborate with colleagues across disciplines. Not only as they formulate particular lesson plans, they work to coordinate lesson plans and to help ensure that the content of each class aligns with the learning themes, and then, especially at the middle school level, that each individual class is aligned with each other. School 26 is featured for offering a broad array of enrichment activities, ranging from visual arts to technology, from music to student government. The full breadth and detail of the report will once again help to highlight the commitment of the board to equity and excellence for our schoolchildren. Our next feature article, Washington Comes to EPS. When the United States Department of Education announced that it would be auditing state implementation of Race to the Top plans, the New Jersey Department of Education immediately turned to the Elizabeth Public Schools. Race to the Top is a federally funded program available to states who compete for dollars through ambitious grants that propose innovative ways to increase student achievement. New Jersey received a Race to the Top grant that provided districts with many opportunities and supports such as the New Jersey State Model Curriculum and monies to pilot new teacher and principal evaluation seminars. Central office administrators, school leaders, and teachers impressed Washington officials with our relationship with the NJGLE, New Jersey Department of Education, and with our own efforts to increase student achievement. As we continue on the national level, sharing our success with the nation, Rachel Goldberg, Director of Staff Development, and Monica Martinez, the Elizabeth Public Schools Harvard Strategic Data Project Fellow, have been invited to share Elizabeth Public Schools' success with the nation in two national conferences this fall. Ms. Martinez has been recognized by the School Network by Strategic Data Project for being one of the first fellows to complete a significant analysis of college readiness. Ms. Goldberg and Ms. Martinez will travel to Boston to share the Elizabeth Public Schools' success with the newest cohort of Strategic Data Project fellows from across the nation. They have also been invited to represent the New Jersey Department of Education in Denver, Colorado. Across state learning collaboration in partnership with Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, Elizabeth Public Schools is honored to represent New Jersey in this exciting experience. And as we move towards gearing up for PARC, the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Career pilot is moving forward, and Elizabeth Public Schools are working to be on the forefront of this national movement. PARC is a consortium of states that includes New Jersey. The consortium is working together to develop the next generation of assessments based on the Common Course Based Experiments. These online PARC assessments will replace the New Jersey Assessment of Skills and Knowledge, NJAS, and also will replace the High School Proficiency Assessment, PESPO, in 2014, tests that are typically administered with pencil and paper. The two components that make up PARC are performance-based assessments and end-of-year assessments. The English Language Arts Performance-Based Assessment will involve literature analysis, narrative writing, research simulation tasks. In that assessment, students will read passages and write several pieces to demonstrate they can read and understand sufficiently complex text independently, write effectively when using and analyzing sources, and also build and communicate knowledge by integrating, paring, and synthesizing ideas. The main performance-based assessment will involve tasks requiring students to demonstrate they can solve problems involving key knowledge and skills, express mathematical reasoning, and construct mathematical arguments, and apply concepts to solve modern, real-world problems. The other component is the end-of-year assessments, and this will involve the Language Arts tasks that require students to demonstrate their content-specific acquired skills and knowledge. The end-of-year assessments will include extended tasks, including innovative item types. Unlike performance-based assessment, all responses will be scored by a score. The English Language Arts end-of-year assessments require students to demonstrate their ability to comprehend or arrange a sufficiently complex text, including literature, literary nonfiction, and informational texts from history, social studies, science, and technical subjects. They will be required to engage in the reading of texts that require them to draw conclusions, interpret the meaning of words, phrases, and technical vocabulary, compare, integrate, and synthesize these ideas presented in the text. In comparison, the back-end of the year assessment will require students to demonstrate their ability to solve multi-step problems, conceptual questions, applications, and carry out substantial procedures. In the spring of 2014, PARC assessments will be field-tested to examine the quality of the items so that PARC can build assessment forms for the 2014-15 school year, test assessment administration procedures, and give the schools and the districts the opportunity to experience the administration of PARC assessments. What does that mean for Elizabeth? Twenty-two schools in Elizabeth have been chosen to participate in the PARC field test which will be administered in two sessions. During the period of March 24th through April 11th, 2014, will be the performance-based assessment, and during the period of May 5th through June 6th, will be the end-of-year assessments. Our last article is the Ford Foundation, Rutgers University, and Elizabeth Public Schools Joined a Collaborative Effort. The Rutgers University Cornwall Center will be working on a study that will help to highlight educational reform in the Elizabeth Public Schools. This study is receiving the financial and technical support of the Ford Foundation. Telling the Story of Elizabeth Public Schools. The Cornwall Center will identify and document lessons to help inform and implement academic reforms in other school districts. The focus is on the content of Elizabeth Public Schools' reform, how reform was implemented in Elizabeth, and how our reforms have been sustained. The research project will combine archive, research, and interviews to document the academic condition of Elizabeth Public Schools before the reforms and to describe the academic reforms that were adopted by Elizabeth Public Schools to improve student academic performance. The grounding of these reforms in the literature and/or in other model schools, implicit and explicit logic models, and the philosophical foundations of the reform will all help to describe how these reforms were achieved, to what extent was the reform model implemented, what were the constraints on implementation, and what were the lessons learned. Data will tell the story through documentation and interviews with team members throughout the district, including members of the Board of Education and community representatives. Extended learning time and managed instruction at Elizabeth Public Schools plays a leadership role. The Rutgers University Cornwall Center will also be focusing on extended learning time and managed instruction. The goal is to document extended learning time as implemented in K-8 schools. The project will document extended learning time goals, philosophies, structures, et cetera, as envisioned and implemented. The research will combine information from existing documents, interviews, and surveys. The project will be comprised of four case studies, one from each of the four variants. A main objective is to document the four extended learning time variants, implicit and explicit logic models, the genesis of the different approaches and the different components of the extended learning time variants. To what extent were the reform models implemented? Or were the constraints on implementation? Or were the adjustments needed to be made? Or were the lessons learned? And what structures were created to facilitate sustained reforms? Will all figure prominently in this effort. Documenting responses by principals, teachers, parents, and classroom behaviors in Elizabeth Public Schools' K-8 schools will be part of the study along with memorizing existing documents, the creation of surveys, and observations held in a structured classroom by embedded researchers. Elizabeth Public Schools is very honored to have such illustrious partners who will no doubt promote the success of our school district on a national basis. And this concludes Inside EPS. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Yurinova. Mr. Kennedy, can you continue?
Uh, I would like just to, a couple of comments, uh, you know, to pinpoint, uh, we have national organizations coming to Elizabeth to see the Elizabeth way, how we're doing, how we have implemented the reform. We have the Ford Foundation, you know, funding the Cornwall Center and Rutgers University. We have, uh, so again, we have been recognized, and not only at the state level, now at the national level for the great work that all of you are doing in the districts. So again, that's a tremendous accomplishment for everyone here that, uh, they are coming to us, we're not going to them. They want to know our story, they want to see what you guys are doing that is making a difference in our students and the progress that we've been accomplishing here in Elizabeth. So again, that makes me feel very proud to see all the studies, our extended day, uh, the, uh, and the other thing, the, uh, Washington, uh, again, when it came to this new evaluation for the teachers and principal, we were a, um, a field test district, now with the PARC, which is a very important, uh, testing, you know, that's going to be happening in, I don't know, like forty states. Uh, they're going to field test, they're going to Elizabeth. So again, uh, they trust what we're doing, they know that we're doing a great job, that the staff is really, uh, doing a, you know, fantastic, uh, job, and they come. So that makes me very proud that, again, that we see all these national, uh, organizations and state organizations. So that's, again, the staff that is here and that is home now, you know, getting ready for tomorrow, uh, to their, uh, credit. So very proud and thankful for, uh, making us shine at the national and, and eventually, who knows, very soon, you know, worldwide, we'll be recognized for all the great things we're doing. So thank you, okay, and the board supporting the staff, you know, etc.
Any other comments? You can take Mr. Yurinova's question.
Tab number five, Authorization Report. Move the report.
Second. Move by Mr. Gosales, say by Mr. Pavlos. Any questions? Seeing no, no calls, Mr. Kennedy?
Pavlos. Calela. Yes. Gonzalez. Yes. Nazco. Yes. Padla. Yes. Castilla.
Yes.
Five A, supplemental authorization report. Move the report.
Move by Mr. Gosales, say by Mr. Pavlos. Any questions, comments? Seeing no, no calls, Mr. Kennedy?
Pavlos.
Yeah.
Calela. Yes. Gonzalez. Yes. Nazco. Yes. Padla. Yes. Castilla.
Yes.
Six, Authorization of Eight Abutters. Take the vouchers. Second.
Move by Mr. Gosales, say by Mr. Pavlos. Questions, comments? Seeing no, no calls, Mr. Kennedy?
Pavlos.
No.
Calela. Yes. Gonzalez. Yes. Nazco. Yes. Padla. Yes. Castilla.
Yes.
Six A, Transfer Funds. Right to the phone. Second.
Move by Mr. Gosales, say by Mr. Pavlos. Any questions? Seeing no, no calls, Mr. Kennedy?
Pavlos.
Yes.
Calela. Yes. Gonzalez. Yes. Nazco. Yes. Padla. Yes. Castilla.
Yes.
Seven, Award of Contracts Report. Award of Contracts. Second.
Move by Mr. Gosales, say by Mr. Pavlos. Questions, comments? Seeing no, no calls, Mr. Kennedy?
Pavlos.
Yeah.
Calela. Yes. Gonzalez. Yes. Nazco. Yes. Padla. Yes. Castilla.
Yes.
Eight Communications, there are none. Now in Page List. Okay, please.
Second. Move by Mr. Nazco, say by Mr. Pavlos. Any questions, comments? Seeing no, no calls, Mr. Kennedy?
Start Pavlos.
Yeah.
Calela. Yes. So staying in page three. Gonzalez. Yes. Nazco. Yes. Padla. Yes. Castilla.
Yes.
Up a few resolutions.
Uh, with Pavlos to be this, the resolution?
Sure. Fourth Education Resolution. National parental involvement debt. Whereas the parents of our students are universally recognized as invaluable members of the educational team and the individuals who are primary responsibilities for state plan of the health and welfare of our students. And whereas, parents and citizens must reach out And whereas, parents and citizens must reach out to involve the larger community in educational issues. And whereas, day after day, Elizabeth Public Schools' parents demonstrate outstanding skills consistent with the high standards of their responsibility in addressing how to organize and make information about community needs, school resources, and student performance broadly available. And whereas, in the delivery of services to students, parents and citizens must organize to create a community-wide agreement and understanding about educational improvement goals. And whereas, on November 21st, 2013, we extend our appreciation and gratitude to this dedicated group of parents for all they do every day for the children in Elizabeth Public Schools. Now therefore be resolved that Elizabeth Board of Education hereby joins in the National Observance of the National Parental Involved Day. Be further resolved and copies of this resolution be forwarded to all school principals and library media specialists to encourage the observants of National Parental Involved Day in our district school under this resolution.
Second.
Move by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Powell. Any questions, comments? Seeing no calls, Mr. Kennedy?
Patholos.
Yes.
Kalala. Yes. Gonzalez. Yes. Nazco. Yes. Padla. Yes. Castilla.
Yes.
Mr. Nazco, could you please, the Puerto Rican way to say it?
Gladly. Board of Education Resolution, Puerto Rican Heritage Month. Whereas on November 19, 1493, Christopher Columbus discovered the beautiful island of Puerto Rico, known to the Taínó Indians as the Boiquen. And whereas, the first governor of Puerto Rico under the Spanish flag was Juan Bolsonaro. And whereas, in 1899, Puerto Rico became a territory of the United States. And in 1917, Congress granted citizenship to the Puerto Rican people. And whereas, in 1952, Puerto Rico became a commonwealth and elected its own governor and legislative representatives. And whereas, the men and women of Puerto Rico have consistently demonstrated leadership, courage, and determination in the hold of the ideals of the people. And whereas, with determination or perseverance and hard work, the people of Puerto Rico have built strong families and proud communities and have earned positions of leadership in areas of government, business, education, sports, sciences, and the arts. Now therefore be resolved that the members of the Elizabeth Board of Education hereby proclaim the month of November Puerto Rican, Puerto Rican Heritage Month. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be forwarded to all school principals and library media specialists in the Elizabeth Public Schools to encourage the observants for this month with appropriate programs, activities, and displays that highlight the history and accomplishments of the whole people of Puerto Rico. I so move this resolution.
Second.
Move by Mr. Nazco, second by Mr. Gonzalez. Comments, questions? Seeing no calls, Mr. Kennedy?
Patholos.
Yes.
Kalala. Yes. Gonzalez. Yes. Nazco. Yes. Padla. Yes. Castilla.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Powell, could you please repeat?
Yes.
Board of Education Resolution, Veterans Day. Whereas throughout the history of our country, men and women have served in our nation's armed forces with courage, with determination, and with strong spirit of patriotism. And whereas, it's because of the efforts of these brave individuals that our great country has prospered and grown. And whereas, in 1919, President Woodrow Wilson proclaimed November 11th as Armistice Day to remind Americans of the terrible costs in lives, property, and suffering that a war brings upon the people of the nation. And whereas, in 1938, Armistice Day became a federal holiday. In 1954, Congress changed the name of the day of observance to Veterans Day on all of our country's veterans. And whereas, New Jersey's veterans, and especially those from our own city of Elizabeth, have made many valuable and significant contributions to the safety and security of our state and our nation in every war dating back more than 200 years. And whereas, the students and staff of Elizabeth Public Schools will join the nation on November 12th of this year in officially recognizing the tremendous depth of gratitude and appreciation owed to those who served in our armed forces, both in times of peace and in times of armed conflict or crisis. And whereas, it is vitally important to the future of this country that our young people continue to be made aware of the sacrifices made by those who fought to keep this nation fair. Now therefore be it resolved that appropriate studies, programs, and displays be developed in all district schools throughout the year to help our students remember the men and women who fought who throughout history have selflessly served our country. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be forwarded to all school principals and library media specialists in Elizabeth Public Schools. I move the resolution.
Second.
Move by Mr. Powell, second by Mr. Powell. Any questions? Comments? No calls, Mr. Kennedy?
Patholos.
Yes.
Kalala. Yes. Gonzalez. Yes. Nazco. Yes. Padla. Yes. Castilla.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez, can you say please, National School Lunch Week?
With pleasure, Board of Education Resolution, National School Lunch Week. Whereas, large programs can increase education achievement, improve child health, decrease classroom disruptions and discipline problems. And whereas, a school lunch program increases a child's readiness to learn and so enables them to obtain the full benefits from instruction while providing solid nourishment for physical growth. And now, therefore be resolved that in order to provide every child in Elizabeth Public Schools the opportunity to reach their full potential by eating a nutritious lunch, the Elizabeth Public Education observes the week of October 4th through the 18th, 2013, as National School Lunch Week. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be forwarded to all principals to encourage parents and residents to become aware that the school lunch contributes to the health, education, and behavior of our children. I so move this resolution.
Second.
Move by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Powell. Any questions, comments?
I would like to thank our food services staff, again, for being there early in the morning, providing breakfast to the children, then coming back at lunchtime, providing the lunch, and making sure that our children are fed and continue to be fed every day. So, thank you, everyone, food services staff, for providing such a great service and such an important service as the School Lunch Week to our children. Thank you.
No calls, Mr. Kennedy?
Patholos.
Yes.
Kalala. Yes. Gonzalez. Yes. Nazco. Yes. Padla. Yes. Castilla.
Yes.
We have a second reading of Vice Policies and Bylaw. Policy 4112.2 Certification. Policy 4131/4131.1. Staff Development. Policy 6142.10 Internet Safety and Technology. And Bylaw 9111, Qualification Requirements of Board Members and a Resolution for Adoption. There is a motion. Second.
Move by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Powell. Any questions? Seeing no calls, Mr. Kennedy?
Patholos.
Yes.
Kalala. Yes. Gonzalez. Yes. Nazco. Yes. Padla. Yes. Castilla. Resolution 10E, Memorating an Agreement Between Education and Law Forcing Officials for the 2013-14 School Year. Is there a motion?
Second.
Move by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Powell. Any comments, questions? Seeing no calls, Mr. Kennedy?
Patholos.
Yes.
Kalala. Yes. Gonzalez. Yes. Nazco. Yes. Padla. Yes. Castilla.
Yes.
With Patholos, could you please repeat Resolution 10S?
Yes.
Whereas Michael Steven Kahn served at Elizabeth Public Schools and the members of the Elizabeth community with great ambition and dedication for 25 years. And whereas, Michael Steven Kahn began his career with Elizabeth Public Schools as a teacher at Victor Mavler School Number 21, where he enriched the lives of his students by treating them with respect, encouraging them to excel, and instructing them with great enthusiasm. And whereas, a principal at Benjamin Franklin School Number 13, Michael Steven Kahn helped ensure the smooth operation of daily activity in a warm, compassionate learning environment where students have the best opportunity to reach their goals. And whereas, a principal at William F. Howard School Number 22, Michael Steven Kahn demonstrated steadfast leadership and guidance by working with his staff to design the Get Through the Times Program at School Number 22 that would eventually be recognized by the United States Department of Education as a national Blue Ribbon School. And whereas, Michael Steven Kahn in all his capacities at Elizabeth Public Schools inspired countless students to follow their dreams while always helping to make them a reality. And whereas, Elizabeth Board of Education and Elizabeth Public Schools Professional Learning Community were saddened to learn that Michael Steven Kahn's passing on September 7th, 2013, and expressed her sympathy and heartfelt sorrow to his family, friends, loved ones. And whereas, Elizabeth Board of Education and Elizabeth Public Schools Professional Learning Community takes solace in knowing that the legacy of Michael Steven Kahn lives among those former students and colleagues who were positively informed by his work and as a result, have enjoyed many of his life's greatest successes. Now therefore be resolved that the passion, pride, dedication, and determination with which Michael Steven Kahn lived each day of his life and educated his students served as an inspiration to us all. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread on official minutes of the Board of Education. I move this resolution.
Second.
Move by Mr. Powell, second by Mr. Powell. Any questions, comments? No calls, Mr. Kennedy?
Patholos.
Yes.
Kalala. Yes. Gonzalez. Yes. Nazco. Yes. Padla. Yes. Castilla.
Yes.
Resolution 10G, the New Jersey School Boards Association, 2013 Annual Workshop. Move the resolution. Second.
Move by Mr. Powell, second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any questions? Seeing no calls, Mr. Kennedy?
Patholos.
Yes.
Kalala. Yes. Gonzalez. Yes. Nazco. Yes. Padla. Yes. Castilla.
Yes.
Resolution 10H, Union County Ed Services Commission, Coordinated Transportation Services.
Move the motion.
Second.
Move by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any questions? Seeing no calls, Mr. Kennedy?
Patholos.
Nazco.
Kalala. Yes. Gonzalez. Yes. Nazco. Yes. Padla. Yes. Castilla.
Yes.
And that concludes the agenda.
I have a little, Mr. Kennedy, I have to recognize Mary Lynn Mon. She was a former Board President for Elizabeth Public Schools. Also, we have Michaela Aristov previously here, so I want to recognize all for being here and at this point today. Thank you. The Vice President requests a motion to go into private session to consider matters exempt under the Open Public Meanness Act, specifically for discussion of personal contracts and legal matters. The board will recommend in public that we take formal action. Standing for private session. The Vice President requests a motion to go to to consider matters exempt under the Public Meanness Act, specifically for the 2013-14 Q-SAT submission, Special Education Matter LS. There are harassment, intimidation, bullying results, and workers' compensation claims, specifically EG, MS, LL, DS, and SH. The board will recommend in public to take formal action.
Motion to go into private, second.
Move by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Nazco. Any questions? Comments? No calls, Mr. Kennedy?
Patholos.
Yes.
Kalala. Yes. Gonzalez. Yes. Nazco. Yes. Padla. Yes. Castilla.
Yes.
Now we go to public session.